Are we all ready?
Yep.
Okay, alright, let me pound my gavel. I call to order the public hearing and regular city commission of Janu- June the 8th, 2021. May we stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all. Nice feeling, yeah?
We're getting good.
That's good.
Pick that up beautifully, beautifully. Okay, Amy, can you call the roll, please?
Well, and for the roll, please remember that you need to give the city and state of where you're located, not necessarily the address, just the city and state. Commissioner Budnick?
Here in Pleasant Ridge, Michigan.
Commissioner Perry?
Here in Pleasant Ridge, Michigan.
Commissioner Scott?
Here in Pleasant Ridge, Michigan.
Commissioner Wall? Mayor Metzger?
Here in Pleasant Ridge, Michigan. Okay. Alright, next, the first item on the agenda, public discussion items not on the agenda. Does anyone have anything to bring forward?
Yeah, I guess I do.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay? Hi, everybody. Greg Leschman on Elm Park Boulevard moved in just about July of last year, so almost one year. Loving every minute of it, as they say. Uh, so not, not a complaint, just a request. Uh, since I live on Elm Park Boulevard and my address is officially Elm Park Boulevard, would it be possible to get the street signs to say Elm Park Boulevard? Similar to Oakland Park Boulevard and Oxford Boulevard and Cambridge Boulevard. I was just wondering if there's enough font room on our beautiful street signs, if we could get that added? Please.
Jim?
Uh, yes, so we're actually going the other way and taking the avenue and boulevard off of all the street signs when we put the new ones in. Um, and the reason, the reason that you, you know, you hit on it is Elm Park has plenty of space for the boulevard, but some of our streets, the font gets very crowded, um, and starts being, become a little illegible. So rather than continue to be inconsistent with where we put an avenue or a boulevard and where we don't, we're just leaving it off everything. Um, so I, I, I wholly understand your quest, but i- in order to, I guess, maintain the consistency, we're just gonna take them all off when we put the new signs up, the new reflective ones.
So are they gonna be different on the Woodward side and the Ridge side, or are they gonna be the same?
Uh, possibly, we'd, we'd have to look at what we did on the Woodward side, um, because those were done a couple of years ago. If we have to swap some of those out, we will.
Okay, because the ones along Ridge are beautiful, they're kind of historic signs.
Well, the decision was made probably about six months ago to replace the ones along Ridge with the style that's along Woodward now.
Okay.
Just again, in the interest of legibility, you can't read those signs at night.
Right, right.
Um, and so that was something the commission decided, I think it was in February. So we have the new signs, uh, it's just a matter of finding time to get them all up.
Gotcha, okay, thanks for the explanation, Jim, appreciate that.
Thank you, thanks, Greg. Um, anybody else? Alright, not hearing anymore, we will move on to governmental reports and welcome Chief Robinson.
Not much for me this time. It's been quiet, which is good.
Good.
So I know we were, we are planning on being at the safety day, so I, this is the last meeting before that, so if I will be there, we're looking forward to it. And, you know, we'll bring the good weather and the fun with us, so.
And so everything has been safe, no fires, no, not too many?
Not in Pleasant Ridge, no, it's been, um, look, he and my officers actually putting together the reports as we speak of the call volume for Pleasant Ridge, so he, he'll give me to route for the signature. But yeah, it's been, I think, some medicals, uh, but nothing major.
Good, good, that's what we like to hear.
Yes.
Are there, are there any questions for Chief Robinson? Well, hearing none, you're off the hook already.
Thanks for coming by.
Right, always, thank you.
It's always a pleasure, thank you.
Chief Nowak, you're on.
Evening, everybody. I just have a couple items myself. Uh, first of all, I want to start off by mentioning the Memorial Day ceremony, although it wasn't quite the same as in years past. Um, we definitely missed the Boy Scouts and the band. And, uh, I think that had a lot to do with some of the residents or our volume of people that were there, but I wanted to give a special shout out to all the people that made an effort into making it what it was. Uh, of course, the garden club, they did a fantastic job with all their plantings and everything there to make the park beautiful. Briar with their work on the flower baskets that line the pathway. Um, of course, Ron Cleveland and his group with the cannon, always a highlight of the event. The Ferndale Fire Department, thank the chief and the crew that was working for showing up and being in attendance and representing, as they always do. Um, and all the people that took time out of their busy day to, um, attend our event. Hopefully, like I said, next year it'll be bigger and better than ever. With that, I just wanted to touch base that on June 2nd, we went, uh, the police department switched back to Berkeley Public Safety Dispatch. So if you call and they happen to answer Berkeley Public Safety, um, sometimes they answer Pleasant Ridge Police, they also dispatch for Huntington Woods, Berkeley, and now Pleasant Ridge again. Don't hang up, you didn't get the wrong number. They do dispatch for us now and, uh, um, they do a fine job and we look forward to a renewed, um, relationship with them. So that, those are the only two things that I had.
Well, thanks for bringing up all, everything on Memorial Day, it was a um, it was great to be back after missing last year, and it's very important that we were all there. And just to let the residents know, there will be a cannon next year, so if you hear something go off at nine o'clock in the morning on Memorial Day, you should know what it is. Be better if you all came to it anyway, but, uh, if you're at home and you hear a big boom, just recognize it is the cannon and nothing else, so. I know one year off, one year off got a lot of people confused, but, uh, we are back in business now, I think. Um, there, and no other, any other governmental reports? Don't?
Anybody?
I, I don't see anybody. Okay, well, with that, we'll move on to city commission liaison reports. And we'll start with Commissioner Scott and the historical commission.
You're muted, Brett.
Apologize. Um, ju- ju- just giving everyone a quick notice, uh, to mark your calendars for September 11th, uh, to join us on our garden tour, our garden sanctuary tour. I've got quite a few lovely homes set up, uh, there's still time, by the way, that if you'd like to join the tour, by all means, um, let me know or reach out to one of the members of the historical commission or the city hall, and we'll get your garden onto the tour. Uh, we've got most of the plans arranged and it should be a great day. And that's about all I've got for this, uh, for this meeting.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Scott? Alright, well, I will, we'll skip, uh, Commissioner Wall and the Recreation Commission, I may come back and ask a couple of questions of Shawnee, if, uh, if that's okay?
Mayor, I actually have the report.
You have the report?
I do.
You got the whole thing going.
I do, I, pledge of allegiance and the recreation report, it's a ignite.
Wow.
So, um, so thank you, um, I got this wonderful report from Amanda and Shawnee, and, um, there are a lot of exciting pool things that they're going to be able to reinstate a lot of the pool programs. So the first exciting one is Learn to Swim. That program's going to be, begin on July 12th, and you must be pre-registered. Um, and it's a residence-only program, and the registration begins on Monday, June 14th. The program begins July 12th, but Learn to Swim be get, um, make sure you get in there and get registered by June 14th. And then this one, a lot of people have been asking about, the morning lap swim will be Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays only. There are no guest passes allowed for that, but it's very cool, it's gonna be from June 21st to July 16th, from 6:00 AM to 6:45 AM. And then July 19th through July 30th, you're going to have 6:30 AM through 7:30 AM. So that'll be fun for the, um, those early birds, the morning lap swimming, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. So then the ice cream social is back, and that's going to be on Wednesday, July 14th, at the PR pool. And it's gonna be at 6:30 PM, originally it was gonna be in the park, but it's, it's always a ton of fun at the PR pool. And I've been getting lots of requests for, for lots of ice cream at the, at the, um, ice cream social this year. So that's Wednesday, July 14th. Then on, um, July 13th and 27th, there is going to be a teen swim night, there are gonna be two teen swim nights. Um, July 13th and July 27th, 8:00 PM to 9:00 PM, residents only. There's gonna be an adult swim night, or actually two of them. Um, adult swim nights will be July 15th and July 29th, from 8:00 to 9:00 PM, residents only. And then this was a very popular event, and I'm excited that it'll be back, it's super fun to go watch, is the, or participate in, is the Adult Swim Meet, July 21st. It's free, but you must pre-register, so go on to the recreation site and pre-register right away. There are team competitions, it's, it, everybody always has a lot of fun with that. Then on, there is Safety Day, as the chief mentioned. Um, Safety Day will be Saturday, June 26th, 9:00 AM at the recreation center. Come on up, br- and you can receive a free bike helmet. Um, they're very excited that, you know, Shawnee and Greg and those guys worked hard to get free bike helmets for all the kids. So make sure, now, um, Shawnee, do they need to register for that?
Yeah, pre-registration is really a huge help, just so that way we can make sure we have, um, sizes sorted, because we came in yesterday, so that way we can have everything dis-sorted when people come, and that way they can just pick them up.
Okay, so make sure to register, everyone, the Safety Day is Saturday, June 26th at 9:00 AM. And then the last thing is very exciting, it's the PR Family Campout. That's gonna be Friday, June 25th. It's gonna be at the community center, and it'll be free, but you do have to pre-register. This is a very groovy event sponsored by the PR Foundation. So thank you, Foundation, for putting this together. So the, you know, many of these events are free, not everything is, but a lot of it is, and, but just make sure to pre-register to really help out, you know, the team so they can be, um, ready. That's all I have, Mayor.
Wow, sounds like an exciting summer.
It does.
Yeah, yeah, plenty to do for all ages.
Yeah.
The next item is Commissioner Budnick, Ferndale Public Schools, and Huntington Woods Library Board.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you, Mayor. I wanted to quickly say I went to the daddy-daughter pool party, and it was absolutely lovey, lovely Shawnee and Greg, it was an awesome event, the kids and the dads had fun, and, uh, kudos to you guys, and looking forward to all the programs you have going on, so thank you. I don't have anything to report for Ferndale Schools at this meeting. That said, I do have a Huntington Woods Library Report, and that is, uh, coming to you from Mary Foreman and Stacy Stutcher. Summer is finally here, and I'm sure we all can feel that. Uh, and the Huntington Woods Library will be reopening its doors for grab-and-go. That's starting Monday, June 14th. And what they're gonna do is 30-minute visits, you'll be allowed to browse, check out items, and use the computers. The hours for grab-and-go are Monday through Thursday, 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and Fridays from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, which is awesome. Online services will continue as well. The library is still offering its fantastic Storytime Zoom events for kids during the summer, as well as family trivia, Father's Day card-making, a Juneteenth tribute, and the first of several Wacky Science Wednesdays begin in mid-June. For adults, uh, tomorrow, Wednesday, June 9th, join author John Mylin and Gail Offen from Lawrence Tech as they discuss, discuss Grand River Avenue, Michigan's Route 66 from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. And on June 16th, Jane Alcon will continue her wildly popular cooking class with recipes featured from her book, The Favorites. And on June 23rd, Dr. Tara Hayes continues her monthly film series with a discussion of Cinema Paradiso by director Giuseppe Tornatore. Sorry. To sign up for the main events, or excuse me, the June events, go to the Huntington Woods Library webpage at HuntingtonWoodsLib.org, or give them a buzz at 248-543-9720. That's all I have.
Would have been much easier with, with some kind of, uh, Masters of Universe or something, kind of.
Right.
Alright, next is Commissioner Perry is back with Planning DDA.
Right, thank you, this one's not quite as exciting, the planning commission and DDA did not meet this past month, but they, they will be meeting at 7:00 PM on Monday, July 26th. So, um, uh, so you'll probably be able to join us on Zoom, is my guess, I think, I don't know if we're deciding that a little later in the meeting, but, yeah, come and join, it's always a good discussion.
Great, thanks. Any questions, comments, before we move on? Alright, next item is the consent agenda, and pretty straightforward, I just want to mention that part of the consent agenda is a res- resolution recognizing June as Gay Pride Month in Pleasant Ridge. So I want to make sure that, uh, people are aware of that. Um, unless there are any particular questions, I would ask, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Your honor, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Support? Alright, any discussion? Alright, Amy, may we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. The next item is the public hearing on fiscal year 2021-22 combined city budget and the 2021 millage rates. Jim, do you have, you want to say anything before we open the public hearing?
I'd be happy to, if you want me to, I'm also happy to say nothing.
I'm not, I'm not asking for a big speech, I'm, I think we, we went through it, uh, last month, and, uh, all the information has been certainly readily available online, so with that, I won't, I'll let Jim talk later. I will open the public hearing. Anybody with comments, please come forward. I'm looking for hands, looking for, nope. Alright, hearing none, I will close the public hearing. And we will now move on to consider the 2021-2022 combined city budget and the 2021 millage rates. And unless there are any, any discussion, I will ask if there's a motion to approve and to adopt.
Mayor, I move the 2021-2022 combined city budgets be approved and that the budget resolution be adopted, including the levying of 12.4262 mils for the general fund operating, 2.5968 mils for the infrastructure improvements, 1.4829 mils for solid waste and disposal, .2850 mils for publicity, .3505 mils for library services, 1.1009 mils for community center complex operations, .6557 mils for park improvement, and 1.3032 mils for police pension stabilization be approved as recommended.
Well done, is there support?
Support.
Any discussion? Questions, comments? Alright, may we have the vote, please, Amy?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. We have adopted the budget and millage rates. Moving on, we are, the next item is establishing a public hearing on Tuesday, July 13th, 2021, at 7:30 PM to solicit public comments on a marijuana facilities ordinance. Jim, you can't get out of this one.
Nope. Uh, so we have a proposed ordinance in front of you that would allow for commercial marijuana facilities in the city. Um, as you know, this was something that we, uh, grappled with a couple of years ago, uh, based on community feedback at that time and, and the, uh, um, the feelings of the commission and, and staff, we, uh, adopted an ordinance to opt out of allowing any commercial marijuana facilities in the city. Uh, we knew this was gonna be something that was a, a placeholder, um, action, and that we would have to reconsider this, uh, that decision at some point in the future. Uh, I think two years maybe is a little quicker, uh, of a some point in the future than we thought or hoped at the time, but here we are. Um, I've been working with, uh, City Attorney Need, uh, to develop the proposed ordinance that's in front of you, and the reason that this is being brought, brought forward now is really in response to, um, some, some external things that have happened outside of Pleasant Ridge. Some of those things are other communities gaining more experience, um, and clarifying some, some, a few of the issues uh, that we knew were unanswered questions in the law when it was passed. Uh, we have a little better feel for how to go about licensing and regulating, um, you know, all of these, these uses now, there's been some clarifying cases there. But also, there have been some, uh, ballot initiatives in other communities around the state last November that succeeded. And, uh, now we, we have a better sense of how, um, some of the proponents of, of allowing these facilities everywhere operate. And one of the things that was concerning to us is, um, and some residents, I think, may have been contacted with surveys, and, and there's been some word on the street, I guess, uh, that, that Pleasant Ridge might be a target for a ballot initiative, um, this November. Um, a citizen-driven, uh, ballot initiative to allow for marijuana facilities in the city. Um, I think it's 5% of the voters who voted in the last, uh, memorial election, that's all it takes, uh, to sign the petition to put something on the ballot in November for the residents to vote on. And when, uh, it's a citizen-driven petition, the way that's operated so far is that, uh, there's a fairly innocuous sounding question that actually goes on the ballot, talking about the number of facilities that we're gonna permit in the city. But not included on the ballot is a fairly lengthy, uh, ordinance that gets adopted if the ballot question passes. And the ordinance is not always, uh, what the community would prefer or like to see or choose to regulate, um, these types of uses. It's what the proponents of the, um, ballot initiative want to see. So what we saw from some other communities who are now, um, some of them are engaged in lawsuits with the group that, um, had the ballot initiative pass in some of these other communities in last November, um, is, you know, they are fighting lawsuits over what can and can't be done as part of a ballot initiative, but we'd rather than find ourselves in that, um, defensive position, um, after conferring with the city commission and, and reviewing this with, with City Attorney Need, we're bringing forward the, uh, attached and proposed ordinance that would allow for limited, um, commercial marijuana facilities in locations at the city that we, uh, identify as being appropriate, and following licensing and operating procedures that we have identified as being appropriate, rather than having those forced upon us by somebody else. So, um, going through the ordinance itself, there's a few, there's really, I think, three main points, uh, that I'd like to, to, um, identify in the ordinance. One is there's a whole slew of, of licensing, uh, procedures and qualification requirements that will guide how we would choose who we grant licenses to, should we get to that point. The other part is there's a number of operating, uh, requirements and procedures in the ordinance, things that, um, stipulate the hours of operation, uh, how, what kind of security features these operations have to have, what they have to do to cooperate with us, um, as we oversee their operations, licensing fees, insurance, all of those day-to-day operating, uh, requirements to make sure that these uses operate in a way that's most compatible, um, with the really predominantly residential and neighborhood scale of Pleasant Ridge. Then the final thing we have in there is some location requirements about where these could go, because again, as a more, uh, really, Pleasant Ridge is, is a neighborhood, uh, more than anything else, being cognizant of the fact that these types of uses can definitely have some spillover impacts. Um, one of the challenges we have sometimes with, uh, particular businesses along Woodward, and it's not necessarily the business itself, it's just the characteristics of the type of business that it is, is that we get some friction, uh, between the off-site impacts of that business and the neighborhood. We saw it with Cork over the years with parking, um, and noise, uh, because, you know, that's a 2:00 AM operation with parking that has to occur off-site. Um, we know that we don't have enough parking along Woodward to accommodate these uses in the way that they're accommodated in other nearby communities. Um, in Ferndale, uh, these, these facilities have one parking space for every 90 to 140 square feet of usable space in the building. Uh, in Pleasant Ridge, I think, uh, and, and that's in a parking lot that is off-site, off the street, and directly accessory to the building. In Pleasant Ridge, I think the highest parking ratio we have is the Ameriprise Building, um, which is about 175 square feet of building space for parking, uh, spot. But then, um, some of the other spaces, uh, Cork has one parking, onsite parking space per 630 square feet of building floor area. Uh, the building at the corner of Sylvan and Woodward has 19 onsite parking spaces, but still only one space for every 270 square feet of building area. So there would definitely be some spillover impact. Now, we know we have public parking lots, two of them, at Fairwood and Wellesley, but those have limited capacity, um, those are 20-space parking lots. We have on-street parking along Woodward, so that's available, but when somebody's visiting a business, drivers coming to town don't respect the, oh, I have to go park in a space on Woodward or a public parking lot, they park at the closest available space to that building. So there will always be some spillover impact from our sites, if we allow these on Woodward, into the neighborhoods. Uh, because the neighborhood street will almost always be closer than the majority of the public parking spaces that are available along Woodward or in our public parking lots. So for that reason, we required in the ordinance, um, that these facilities have to have onsite parking, at least one space for every 200 square feet of building area. And that's actually less than is required in Ferndale. Um, Ferndale has had some parking issues at their site that has the least amount of off-site or onsite parking. Um, and that's the facility that has one parking space for every 140 square feet of usable building area. So we're already requiring about 25% less parking than Ferndale's most congested facility has. Uh, but, um, each facility has to provide that in an onsite parking lot. The other requirement we have is that all of these facilities have to be separated at least 200 feet from any, uh, structure that's used or zoned for residential purposes. And again, that's a neighborhood interface, we don't want these causing spillover impacts into the neighborhood, because that's where the city, that's where we're gonna hear the complaints, that's where we're gonna have to mostly get involved um, in dealing with those off-site impacts, and having dealt with that a little bit in the past, it's, it's difficult. Um, we can't, the police can't be there 24 hours, well, it's not 24 hours a day, they can't be there 12 hours a day to be parking police, uh, for people going into these businesses. So, you know, rather than allowing, uh, the Starbucks that's, uh, at 13 and Woodward to come in and then have its drive-through lines spilling out onto Woodward all the time, uh, we're looking to prevent those types of situations from occurring here with these types of uses. So these uses are permitted in any C or W zoning district, W is the zoning district over at Iron Ridge, C is the zoning district primarily along Woodward. Um, these uses are permitted anywhere in those districts, as long as they can meet that parking requirement and the separation from residential structures requirement. So I just wanted to be very clear about, you know, those, um, location requirements. And then the final thing that I would, uh, like to point out, and let me get the ordinance open in front of me. What would be the type of marijuana? What would be the type of marijuana facilities that we would allow here? There are a number of these uses under two different enabling laws. We've got the recreational marijuana law and then the medical marijuana law. And oftentimes, there's a parallel where it's a similar type of use. In the medical law, there's provisioning centers, and in the recreational law, there's retailers. So what our ordinance requires is that any use that comes into town has to have dual licenses. So you have to be a provisioning center and a retailer and meet the requirements of both state laws. So what we would allow as proposed in the ordinance, designated consumption establishment, we would authorize zero. And a designated consumption establishment is what it sounds like. It's a place where you can smoke marijuana on premises, kind of like a marijuana bar. That's not something that we think is appropriate and it's not something that we're looking to allow. This is not something that even Ferndale doesn't allow these at this time in their ordinance. So we have zero for that. Marijuana growers, we authorize zero. Growing is really an industrial-scale operation. It's not something that we think is appropriate for Pleasant Ridge with the potential for smells and all the other security and everything that goes along with that. You have a lot of product in a centralized location that is in demand, obviously. So we're not looking to facilitate growing in Pleasant Ridge, just given the nature of our town, the small scale, the very, very, very limited sites where you could even do that. Marijuana micro-business, one, we would initially authorize. Retailer or provisioning center, and again, the and provisioning center, two, would be authorized. Processors, two, are authorized. A processor is somebody who can, for instance, take marijuana and make edibles onsite. So that's what a processor does. Safety compliance facility, two of those are authorized, and secure transporters, two are also authorized. And one thing I'd like to point out is that oftentimes what you see is co-location of licenses. And all that means is one business entity will have a bundle of these licenses. But oftentimes, your retailers or provisioning centers also have the processing license, the safety compliance license, and the transporting license, so that they can produce their own edibles onsite for sale. They can do the safety testing to make sure that the product that they're creating and selling is, meets all of the stringent safety criteria for purity and everything else that the state requires, and then transporter so that they can deliver. So most of your, most of your retailers and provisioning centers do have more than just the one type of license. So we would expect that to also be the case in Pleasant Ridge. So that's why we authorize two of each of these categories, because they're very commonly co-located. So I think that's it. You know, we are trying to be proactive on this to claim our space here rather than having it claimed for us through a ballot initiative. And also, just now we have a little bit more comfort with, you know, how we can, how we can do this. There's still a lot of unanswered questions under the state law, and we know that there is some, you know, that's just something that we have to deal with. But I think that's the high points at this time. I know that Greg Need didn't have anything that he wanted to officially present tonight, but he is obviously present in the meeting and available for questions, as am I. And the process would be tonight to obviously ask any questions you have of us on this, but also to schedule the public hearing for the July meeting. We would consider the ordinance after the public hearing.
Thanks, Jim. I don't know if Greg had anything to add. I think you've covered it, covered it quite well. I did want to just reiterate, we, we as a commission were actually perfectly happy to stay as an opt-out. That was, that was our, that was our choice, and certainly the city administration felt the same way. But with this, you know, the possibility of this citizen initiative, and even though I don't think Pleasant Ridgeers will pass it, we don't want to take any chances. And so I think that, that between Greg and Jim, we've come up with a very good, I think a very comprehensive ordinance that really does more or less direct what we want to the place that we would want it if we have to have it. So I had, I had no questions. I think, you know, the issues have really been well-covered in the ordinance, and certainly you talked about the safety issues. Certainly, there's the lighting and the number of other things that are very, they're very important that have been specified in this as well. And I do recommend that residents read it before next, next month. And, and those who are interested in talking further come in with their comments. So let me just turn it, I don't know if Greg has anything, and certainly I open it up to the commission to ask any questions.
Nope, I think Jim covered everything very well. Like, for one of the rare times in my life, I have nothing to say.
Whoa. Make a note of that, folks. Commission?
Mayor?
Yes.
I have one quick question on regarding selection of the, the business that, the businesses that would be chosen to get a license. I know that's been one of the tough points that other cities have run into. Do we feel, do we feel good about the parameters and everything that we've set in the selection process?
On this one, I'm actually going to 100% defer to Greg, because he's been involved in the Berkeley court case over just this. So take away, Greg.
The issue's being litigated, it's still in the courts, but I, I think this is a very defensible approach. That's the process that was set forth in the ordinance. Berkeley had a fairly complex point licensing system. They had many, many applicants, they scored them, they selected three of the top from the 30 applicants, and the rest of them were given the opportunity to make an appeal for their scores. And the city appointed Need as their marijuana hearing officer. Unfortunately, about a half an hour before the first hearing, a lawsuit was filed and it kind of put everything on hold for a while. But very recently, a decision came down that was largely in favor of the city. The marijuana operators had argued that the state law pretty much takes away a lot of discretion on communities, and that a point system, as Berkeley and criteria, as other communities have put into their ordinances, were invalid as being inconsistent with the state law. And at least the circuit judge here struck that, or denied that argument. They said, nope, the city, you can have your ordinance, you can have your process. There were some Open Meetings Act issues that have kind of delayed the processing, but at least there, the circuit judge upheld the city's ordinance. So it's still going to be litigated, it'll most certainly go to the appeals courts, and we don't, at this point, have a decision that's binding statewide. But I think what we have in here is sound. I think it has a very good chance of standing up to a challenge in the courts.
Thank you. Another question, someone was asking me, like, you know, we talked about this is like a citizens initiative and things like that. Is this like, was, I mean, I know the answer to this, but was this started by, you know, Pleasant Ridge residents? Or where does this whole initiative that come from? Is this organic to the city?
Well, you know, that, the, the initiative, there were four of them that passed in other communities. And there was one organizer that was involved in all of those.
An outside person?
Correct. And that, that organizer also had contacted or touched base with the city, I guess. So I put it on our radar. So I don't know where that stands. I don't know if they will come forward. I, I don't know. All I know is that, you know, it's a thing that happened somewhere else in November, and it's a thing that might happen to us. So here we are.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, then I'm going to ask for a vote on a motion to hold a public hearing on the marijuana ordinance in July.
Mayor, I move that a public hearing be established on Tuesday, July 13th, 2021, at 7:30 PM to solicit public comments on a proposed marijuana facilities ordinance.
Is there support?
Support.
Any further discussion? Okay, not hearing, can we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. We will have a public meeting, public hearing in, in July. Next item on the agenda is the water infrastructure millage ballot language. Jim, you're up again.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. The language that's in the packet, and which I can read in a moment, is to place a ballot question on the November general election ballot to ask the voters to approve a three-and-a-half mil 30-year millage for water infrastructure purposes. This is something we've been discussing pretty extensively over the last two to three months as we start to get ready to embark on our lead service line and water main replacement project. We've talked about our 100-year-old water mains and our 60% lead service line presence in the city, and the fact that the state's requiring us to replace these now. So this is a big project. It's a $25 million project. It's an $850,000 annual cost, and our current water fund total budget is about 100 and 1.2 million. So it's a big, it's a big chunk. The millage would raise about $620,000 in 2022. It would allow us to return water rates back to the 2020 levels, the basically, the, the, what you're paying right now, as opposed to what you will be paying starting in September with the 35% increase for the fiscal year 22 water rates, which nobody's excited about. But we'd like to return those water rates back to their normal level, and this would allow us to pay for the infrastructure project mostly through property taxes. It provides a stable and predictable source of revenue for this without running the risk of falling into a water rate death spiral where people continue to cut back their water usage to save money on water bills, meaning we have to raise rates higher to pay for the infrastructure that we have to do. So the approval of the millage would result in a total tax plus utility bill increase of 6% to 7% for nearly all residents, 95% of our residents, two confidence intervals around the mean. So almost everybody's going to see a 6% to 7% total cost increase for what you pay for your property taxes plus your annual utility bills at current water usage rates. So it's, it's a very fair spread. Everyone pays according to their ability. We do have a lot of water infrastructure information that's available on the website, all of the information from the town hall, goes through why this is needed, why we have to do this project, and what it entails to get it done. So if you click on the water infrastructure information link in the Quick Links menu at the top of the homepage, you'll be able to see all of that information, which is, serves as all the background and basis for this millage request.
Okay.
And so the ballot language is, shall the city of Pleasant Ridge be authorized to levy up to three and one-half mils per year for years 2022 through 2051, in excess of its charter authorized tax rate as reduced by section 34 of article nine of the 1963 state constitution? Such additional millage to be used to finance water infrastructure projects, including water main replacement and construction, public and private lead service line replacement, and associated restoration work within the city of Pleasant Ridge? It is estimated that three and a half mils would provide $620,993 if levied in full in 2022. So the request before the city commission tonight is your approval to place this question on the November 2, 2021 general election ballot.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Are there any questions or comments for Jim? No? Okay. Hearing none, I'm going to ask, is there a motion to approve the language and forward it to the Oakland County Clerk for placement on the general election ballot in November?
Your honor, I move the ballot proposal, which reads specifically, do I need to read the whole thing again, Jim? Amy? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, do it.
Okay. Shall the city of Pleasant Ridge be authorized to levy up to three and a half mils per year for, for years 2022 through 2051, in excess of, of its charter, sorry, of its charter authorized tax rate as reduced by section 34, article nine of the 1963 state constitution? Such additional millage to be used to finance water infrastructure projects, including water main replacement and construction, public and private lead service line replacement, and associated restoration work within the city of Pleasant Ridge? It is estimated that 3.5 mils would provide $620,000, $620,993 if levied in full in 2022. Be approved and forwarded to the Oakland County Clerk for placement in, on the Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021 general election ballot. Sorry, that was hard.
No wonder, no wonder Brett didn't want to read it. So
There you go.
Oh.
Is there support?
I support.
Any further discussion? May we take the vote, please, Amy?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, it will be on the ballot. Thank you. Next item, delinquent utility bills fee and credit card processing fee review. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that we started waiving last year when, when COVID first hit, starting in March when everything shut down, including City Hall. And with the economic uncertainty at the time around what the impacts of COVID would be, we waived late fees for utility bills and also credit card processing fees for utility bills. Given, and then we, we did review that decision in October or November of last year when things had started to return a little bit to, I won't say normal, but a bit of a stasis, a new operating procedure. We decided at that time to continue waiving the late, late fees and processing fees. Given now that 60% of Michigan residents have gotten at least one vaccine shot and no, I'm sorry, July 1, the governor stated that everything is being waived and we're just returning back to normal, and also that July 1 is the start of our new fiscal year, we would like the city commission to discuss and consider restoring late fees for utility bills and also restoring the credit card processing fees. The credit card processing fees specifically, we waived when City Hall was closed and it was unavailable for people to come in to pay their bills. And we wanted to make it easy for people to do this from home and not penalize people because there was a global pandemic going on. Now that City Hall is open again and will be returning to its new regular business hours on July 1, I think it's appropriate to, to restore back to our standard operating procedure. We have been paying the credit card fees, the city's just been eating those for the past year. And there's some information in your, in your packet about, you know, the number and volume and dollar value of transactions. But what it comes down to is waiving late fees and waiving credit card processing fees is about a $30,000 cost to the city annually. So it's not insignificant, what that means. And those are just costs that then have to be made up elsewhere. So it's no free lunch.
Does anybody have questions or comments for Jim? Or want to make their, their opinion known?
Yeah, Mayor, I was going to say, yeah, it sounds good to me, Jim. I, I think the way you laid that out, we're, we're ready to move, move back and start with a clean slate July 1.
I, I have to agree. I think that's, you know, it's been, it's been a good deal for waiving them. I mean, during the COVID, during the pandemic, and I think July 1 is a perfect, perfect timing to reinstate it in, in conjunction with the, the new budget year. So any other comments before we take the vote?
Mayor, likewise, it makes sense to me that we reinstate them to coincide with the July budget year.
Good, excellent. Good. Excellent. All right. Well, then I'm going to ask if somebody would make that motion, please.
Mayor, I move the fees charged to delinquent utility bills and the credit card processing fee be reinstated beginning July 1, 2021.
So you take the short ones, don't you?
I did.
Is there support?
I second that.
Without further discussion, can we take the vote, please?
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Welcome, Commissioner Wall.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the city commission junior commission in-person meeting discussion.
So sort of similarly related, I guess, to the fact that July 1, COVID doesn't exist anymore. I'd like to, I guess, you know, staff would just like the commission's input and guidance on when we'd like to return to in-person meetings. Thoughts on this? What some other communities are doing is a hybrid approach where they're meeting in person, but they're also doing Zoom meetings. And that's great, but those communities have staff that can just operate the Zoom meeting and also do everything else, whereas here it's me and Amy. So I don't think it's feasible, but having talked to some of those other communities, how they operate their meetings, for us to expect to continue to do this on Zoom and in person, and the commission won't be able to handle everything. So once we go back in person, it'd just be back in person. We'd have our YouTube live stream available so that anyone can watch on the internet or public access television. But we'd be back in the meeting room, and presumably after July 1, there won't be any capacity restrictions on how many members of the public we can have or social distancing that will be in there. So it should be feasible to return on July 1. But under the Open Meetings Act, we did declare a local state of emergency, and that was open-ended. And the Open Meetings Act does provide for us to continue to meet via video conference until December 31 of this year. So we could continue to meet via Zoom video conference for the rest of this year. So staff doesn't have any recommendation. We're really looking for guidance from the city commission on what you guys want to do and how you want to handle this.
I open it up to the commission.
I personally feel like there's something to be said for meeting in person as far as synergy and just keep talking about ideas. And I think maybe, I mean, could we offer it up to the commissions? And could we vote within the commissions and what the people in the commission, in the junior commissions want to do?
Yes.
So me, like, we can't, we don't have to, like, can we just, like, open it up? And then we can individually see what the, you know, not unilaterally say everybody is coming back.
Yes, correct. And really what we were interested was when the city commission was interested in meeting in person again.
Oh, I'm interested.
But that's, but that is, you know, that is a good, a good thought to, I guess, come up with the policy for how, you know, are we just going to let each of our other boards and commissions, the planning commission, the rec commission, the historical commission, just let them decide how they want to handle that on their own? You know, staff, again, has no preference on that.
Yeah, I think in the case of the historical commission, they're just waiting for a nod from the city commission to say that it is okay to do so. And then that sets up those meetings and also the availability of the museum.
Mayor, I was gonna say, while I enjoy sitting in my basement and dialing in, I'm, it doesn't matter to me either way. I'm great with going back. I agree with Amanda. There is something to be said for being in person, but at the same time, if someone is not ready, I'm absolutely fine sitting in this 62 degree basement right now with my jacket on.
Humidity.
Yeah, I'm perfectly fine with going back to in-person meetings. The interesting thing is that I think we've had a really good turnout on the Zoom meetings, just people being available and able to tune in online rather than watch later. So we do, we might lose some of that, but I'm fine coming back into the chambers as well.
My, I guess, my question, and I'm perfectly happy with starting back in July. It just seems to me then for the junior commissions that we should be consistent with the board. Instead of saying, you know, one commission is going to stay home and the next commission is going to come in. If we're gonna, if we're gonna start back in July, then I think that any of the junior commissions should be meeting in person after that, too. I don't know how you feel about that.
That doesn't bother me.
So Mayor and Jim, would we, let's see, would there be the option to, to, to join via Zoom if you say aren't in?
No.
Then, or we're just gonna just one or the other? Okay.
It kind of has to be one or the other, just the way it works with having to run the Zoom meeting while being in person in the meeting. And that's just not feasible for us.
Okay.
Okay. Do you, do you need a motion? Do you need something?
You know, I don't, I don't know that
Just agreement?
Yeah, I guess it's just clarity, what I, you know, whatever is clear. A motion will be nice because then it's, you know, something on record that the commission is all officially behind, letting us know when to, when to start back, July, August, September, you know, whatever that is.
Mayor, just a follow-up question. Is this the last piece of the emergency act that we are enacting, or are there other elements that are still in place that are also under discussion?
No, this is really the only local thing. We adopted that emergency declaration here just so that we'd be able to do the video conference meetings throughout 2021. And the good news is that this is not, you know, a forever decision. If there's a fourth wave or something that, you know, comes around with the Indian strain in September or something, we can go back to Zoom meetings anytime we choose throughout till the end of this year, as the Open Meetings Act law currently stands.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I will.
Make a motion? All right, Amanda.
I would like to make a motion that we return to in-person meetings starting with the July city commission meeting.
Is there support?
Support.
Is that worded well enough for you, Amy?
That's fine.
Thanks, Amy.
Shall we take a vote?
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, yes. And will we just inform the junior commissions then that they will be starting as well?
Yeah, we'll let them know. Okay, I was gonna say, we'll notify the junior commissions and let them know. And, you know, if there's, if there's, if any of the junior commissions have any serious qualms about not returning, you know, obviously we'll be sensitive to that and we'll work with them on that. But we'll let them know that, you know, kind of the game plan is back to face to face.
Okay, good, good. Well, from what I heard about all the faces enjoying each other at the pool this weekend, I'm sure that even the commissions would like to be back together again, at least, at least once, you know, so.
We just have to check all the light bulbs in chambers to see that they still work.
Very true, very true. Okay, the next item is the city manager's report.
I don't have much. We're getting towards the end of actually the crazy time here of getting ready for Memorial Day and getting the flowers planted and the pool opened and everything else. Guests again allowed at the pool June 21. So we'll be fully back to normal operating procedure. I think that things at the pool have been operating well, and I think we've been doing a good job. So thank you to Shawnee and Greg and all of the new pool staff for being on top of things over there.
Well done.
Happy, real happy with how things are progressing. It was a weird spring and, you know, kind of things were changing quickly. And then, you know, so we rolled with it. So that's been great. We got our next batch of water meters in. The great semiconductor shortage of 2021 impacted our water meter replacement project because our second delivery of meters was delayed because the manufacturer couldn't get the conductors to manufacture the water meters for us. And then Amy's been on the phone for the last two days trying to track down the shipment, which was supposed to get here a few days ago, but then got lost in Detroit somewhere. And apparently was sent back to the, I don't know. But we got it. We got our meters in today. So I know that many people who had appointments set had those canceled or postponed because of the meter shortage. We're back.
Great.
Yeah, and we're looking forward to our next big batch of stock boxes that we have to dig up because they don't work and everything else because they're 100 years. That's been, that's been fun. And other than that, that's, that's all I have, at least that I recall right now.
Any questions for Jim?
When did you say the, the, or Amy, you're hunting down the meters right now?
No, they actually, I've been trying to find out where they were. They were delivered to the shipper sometime last week, and they never made it here. So I've been calling, 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 and they finally arrived today this afternoon.
Yay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good job. Okay, no questions? We'll move on to other business. Who's got other business?
I do.
Okay.
I would like to make an announcement. I would like everybody to know that I am not intending on running for city commission again this November. It's been wonderful. I can't tell you how much I've enjoyed serving the community and working with all of you. It's a really hard decision. I'm doing it for my family, my daughter. I think some of you know my daughter Charlotte. She's going to be 12 this year, and I really want to focus on that. And I also have a new job that's taking up a lot of time, and I just want to step back and focus on my family. But I can't tell you how much it's meant to me and how much I love our community. I'll miss everybody.
Well, as we go out together, Amanda, I just want to say how much it's been a great four years. And thank you so much for all you've done up until before you came to the commission and certainly with the foundation, with the rec commission, with everything else that you've done, all the contributions you've gotten for the PR foundation auction and everything. And I know you will continue to do that. But then to add the four years of as commissioner has been over and above the call of duty. So I really, we really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
And certainly understand your decision. I think it's a smart, you know, family comes first. And Charlotte deserves her mom, so.
Thank you.
So that kind of opens things up, doesn't it, folks?
It does. Sure does.
Actually, there will be three open seats, you know, so all three seats are open.
I'd be happy to talk to anybody who's thinking of running. Please contact me, you know, if you want my opinion or whatever.
Well, everybody knows that I'm behind Brett, so I don't, I'm not going to ask anybody to call me for opinions. If they want to, if they want to, they can, but I'm still, my vote has already been cast, so.
Thank you, Kurt.
Certainly.
It's a solid endorsement, Mayor Metzger.
Am I allowed to do that?
Greg is frowning. I don't know.
Greg is frowning.
I'm sorry. Are there other items? Other, other business?
So I, I have something just segueing from that announcement. Nominating petitions for mayor and city commission are due by July 20 at 4 o'clock. That's Tuesday, July 20 at 4:00. So they're available now at city hall. We're here Monday through Thursday, right now, 9 to 4. Stop in, pick up a packet. You need 25 signatures minimum to get on the ballot. If anybody has any questions, feel free to call city hall and speak with me or send me an email. I'm happy to answer anyone's questions that they have about the process or running or, you know, what they need to do for those petitions.
There any questions for Amy or anything? Any other items?
Kurt, I just had one, one thing. Thanks for everybody coming out to the pool. It has been really fun to see everybody, and I think everybody's really enjoying everything and lots of happy people on the pool deck. But I just wanted to remind everybody that the next edition of the Riddler will be out at the very end of June, very early part of July with more information, the July and part of August pool schedule in there. So just remember, that's a glossy document, eight pages. It comes folded in half. So please don't throw that away. It has lots of good information in it. It'll, you know, hopefully avoid lots of phone calls or, you know, time waiting in line for, you know, potential answers that could be answered right there, you know, pull it out, rip it out, put it on the fridge, take a screenshot of it, put the, you know, dates that you want in the calendar or whatever. So I just wanted to say then, thanks, Chris, you know, for the kind words. It was nice to see you and Charlotte at the pool on Friday as well. I'm glad you guys had a good time.
Oh, before we go, I just wanted to thank, to recognize Shawnee and Greg also for putting up with a very strange event yesterday when WCSX radio came to the Pleasant Ridge pool to christen us as city of the week. And I got to be, I got to be interviewed as I stretched out in one of those new lovely lounge chairs. And it was, it was strange, but I think we pulled it off. The sound was terrible, so don't try to listen to it. But it was, I must say that CSX was very excited about Pleasant Ridge and just kept saying that, you know, that, that hidden gem. And so it went really well, and they've been very, I've seen several of their bits, some of their pictures. They ate at the whistle stop and they did a little promotion there. And so they've been driving around and taking pictures of the city. And so for what it's worth, it's, you know, it's a nice little gig. And they were cute at the pool, I think, more or less.
Yeah, they were really happy. They were excited.
So with that, I'm going to ask, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Ha ha.
Hi.
We stand adjourned. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Bye, everyone.